So YouTube is live right now?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, well, welcome back to a staff meeting. Today's Tuesday and June 20th. Mr. Manager, I had a note earlier saying we have several topics. Software demo for public works, recruiting from HR, overview and ozone awareness policy. And I guess we're going to talk about the tornado sirens in Derby. Is there any preference in order today?
Yeah, let's let, thanks Vice Chair. Good morning, everyone. Let's let Julie go first with the weekend storm analysis.
I have people watching this, so they would probably like to have that up front if that's okay.
And then we'll do ozone alert update after that.
That'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Hi, good morning. Julie Stimson, Director, Sedgwick County Emergency Management. I just hit the off button. There we go. So yes, this weekend storms activated our tornado outdoor warning siren system. And we did have a few concerned folks that some heard the sirens, some didn't hear the siren. And I just want to kind of clarify how the system worked. And we did have a couple of things happen that we are working on right now. So first off, we had three polygons issued by the National Weather Service in a very short amount of time. In your packets in front of you, there is actually, these are the data reports of the timestamps and when our system received those polygons. What we determined is because we have this complex system of an old system trying to communicate with our new system, as you recall, we're in a six-year or five-year capital improvement plan to upgrade our tornado system to work with new technology. So when you have old technology and new technology communicating through software and you have three polygons that are hitting a large area, it's really kind of hard to see. But this blue outline right here is the polygon. And you'll see all of these colors, and those are all different zones. So we had a lot of warnings going out simultaneously in a software system that we have not been able to test with a polygon to see how it would behave when it gets this much data at one time. So we did have an issue in Derby. The zone sounded, the system worked as it should. But when it pushed the signal to Derby, the system was bogged down and it did not receive the message. And you'll see that with the timestamps of the system trying to communicate. Right now, I have our contractor here who's working on the software, on the programming piece, to see how we can fix that so we can control the flow a little differently. So this way, it goes out to everybody and doesn't bog the system down. That's the down and dirty. There's a lot of technical pieces to this. But that's pretty much what happened with the city of Derby is we tried twice through automation and we also tried to manually activate it with our manual backup system. And the signal went, it just was not received because of all the other traffic going on in the software system. The good news is, I do want to clarify, we did not have any tornadoes touch the ground. These polygons were issued based on radar indication of potential rotation. So the good news is, just to clarify, we did not have any tornadoes touched down. Of course, we had damage, a lot of trees down, power lines down. But those primarily were from straight line winds. So again, even though the air was not rotating, we still had significant weather coming through, impacting our communities, causing power outages and some structural damage. Let's see, some folks have asked about the Monday test. We test the system every Monday at noon, weather pending, not on holidays. That is a maintenance check. It's a different type of test, just to clarify. It's to make sure our sirens are physically activating and making the noises that we want them to make. It does not test that polygon piece. The National Weather Service actually can't provide us a test polygon. And this is a conversation happening across the country. We really, really wish we had that capability because we don't know how the software will handle a lot of data coming at one time. So hopefully, that will continue to be in discussions and we'll have a solution to that. We would, if we could test the polygon communication piece of this, we'd be able to identify issues ahead of time. I do want to reiterate as well, we had a lot of folks saying their cell phones went off, but the sirens didn't go off and that they received no warning. I definitely want to clarify, these outdoor sirens go off to alert people outside to go inside to seek more information. They're not meant or designed to be heard indoors. I know a lot of folks will use that as that final validation that the threat is real and it's in that area. But I beg people to not use that as their sole source before they take protective action. If your phones are going off, if the local media is reporting that you need to seek shelter, please do so without relying on those outdoor warning sirens. And then we also ask that folks not call 911 unless an emergency response is needed. We had a lot of phone calls coming in, just asking if there was a tornado, my sirens are going off, what should I do? We need those lines to stay clear for anybody who needs those emergency response. I stand for any questions.
Questions from Commissioners?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Hahn. Civic ready alerts, are we still in the test mode in some parts? Or and what would the role be of civic ready alerts for tornado warnings and severe?
So the civic ready alerts would be for the public sign up to go in. So it is live, it's not in test mode, but we need folks to go in and sign up. We have not looked into that system yet to see how that functioned during this recent event. That's kind of next. We want to get the siren analysis done first. But we want to see how that performed during this tornado warning. So some folks, if they did not receive it and they thought they should, if you can send me information, send us their information. I could look into their accounts and see why they didn't get the notification that they expected.
I did receive a message that, in Park City in particular.
Okay, okay, yeah.
So I'll send you that information. And could you just clarify one more time? What avenues, does emergency management send the trigger for the phone system? Is that who sends this or is it our local news networks that sends the ping for the phones to go off? And who's managing that system?
That is automatic through the National Weather Service. When they issue that polygon, they are directly connected to set off those cell phones. So the wireless emergency alerts and even to our system, it's an automatic trigger in our message to activate. We do not necessarily push a button. It's automatic based on the National Weather Service connection.
So emergency management is the one who's sending for the sirens? Your organization's sending or pushing the button for the sirens? And is that all that emergency management?
No, actually, we don't. It's automatic. It's now automatic, yes. That's part of the upgrade that we have now is it's on automatic. Soon as that polygon drops, those sirens and that polygon are going to sound.
Okay, very helpful.
But again, like we saw, the system got overloaded because we had a lot of, we had three polygons very close together. So as the system was analyzing this data and sending information out, we did have a problem in the Derby area that they're working on right now.
Thank you very much.
Couple of other things. On that cellphone warning, is that based on a zip code or based on which cell tower you're connected to? Or how's that?
The wireless emergency alert that automatically triggers from the polygon, that is based on your location, based on cellphone towers in that polygon area. So that is based on your geolocation. The civic alerts, the public sign up civic alerts, those are based on your address that you put into the system.
Okay, very good. And just, I guess, reiterate, I don't know anybody actually has a weather radio at this point because we don't have our cell phones at this point. But our weather, did weather radios do their?
Yes.
They worked correctly?
They did, yes. I know mine went off all three times that there was a. The difference with the NOAA weather radios, and we encourage everyone to get one, but it does sound for the entire county. If anybody in Sedgwick County gets a tornado warning, those NOAA weather radios will go off. And some say that's a bad thing, you know, and it's annoying. But it's a good thing because it lets you know that there is weather nearby and to pay attention and turn on your local news or radios and get that more information, so. And if anybody has any questions on NOAA weather radios, they can contact our office. We can help them get connected, help them with programming and all of that stuff with the radios.
So since the system didn't work exactly like it should have, I guess, if I was concerned about that, how could you assure me, is there some timeline that this will get checked out? I mean, how do I feel better about this? It didn't work this time exactly like we wanted it to work. So how do we know next time? Is there some plan over the next year or sometime that we can?
The fixes to the delay that we had this time is being worked on. You won't hear me guarantee that 100% reliability on a system that is a mechanical system with a lot of variables that can make things not necessarily go 100%. Again, the reason why we say multiple levels of communication, not a single method of communication is 100% effective 100% of the time. It's just a lot of variables that can sway that, so.
So.
I'm an ecologist, we're working on it. And I can't guarantee, and again, that's why we say have more ways to receive that information. Those outdoor sirens are for outdoor people to go inside and seek more information.
How many sirens are in Sedgwick County again?
153.
Okay, and it used to be, a long time ago, not, I'm trying to remember years ago, but when they say they detected something, they say by Cheney, the entire county would go off at one time. And so we've moved away from that system to where you can, I guess, control to some small geographic area, what sirens you want to have go off.
So because we're merging these two systems together, we've kind of had to redesign our zones, which is why some folks in Mays got the tornado siren alerts for the storm that was up by Furley. It's because they're in the zone with the new system that we're programming. So we're, again, it's messy because we're doing this upgrade and I wish we could do it all at one time, but it's a phased program over several years. But the zones, and we'll have this on our webpage. We realized we really didn't do a good job of communicating this during our merging of these two systems. But everyone is in a zone, and if that zone has any kind of polygon in it, those sirens will activate.
So we had a kind of a perfect storm here.
Yes.
And most of the time, we don't have this overlapping polygon thing like we saw this time. This is pretty unusual, I guess.
It is, but it's something we need to be prepared for in the future because, you know, there is a likelihood that this could happen again, especially if you get a line of storms like we had that could produce multiple tornadoes at one time. This wasn't just an isolated supercell, this was a line of storms that went through. So there could be the potential again for multiple warnings to go off at the same time.
And alongside that, you know, it was also fairly late at night, 11 o'clock at night is when this really got bad. And there was no night light, I mean, the moon was down, if you will. And so it was dark outside, very dark. And you couldn't see really what was happening very well. And I just say, you know, I guess for us to be weather aware, number one, have your cell phones up, watch the media coverage. I guess I was watching, you know, some of the stations were broadcasting some live information about what was happening right at that moment. And of course, having a weather radio are all good things we can do. I think that the tornado sirens, again, let me stress one thing, you already said it, but let me stress it again, it's for outdoor warning. Some people hear them indoors because they're close enough to the siren, but it's really not intended to be one that'll wake you up. So if you go into bed and you know there's weather projected for that night, the best thing to do is have a weather radio would wake you up in that situation, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate the update. I had an awful lot of, because I represent the Derby area, I had an awful lot of people pretty upset. They felt like the system was broken and they don't really know how to answer the question. Others simply say, we're doing the best we can. I don't think it's broken, but I know there's things I don't know. So you explained what's actually happening. I appreciate that explanation.
We have one component on the very end that didn't quite work, but the system itself worked as it should have. All the other zones activated the way we wanted it to. And the system was trying to communicate to Derby. We just had that overload on the inside of it, and we're working on that right now.
Okay. Any other questions for Julie Stimson on this issue? I guess not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
I think Susan's next. She has a PowerPoint, so we'll be using the screen for the next couple of items. So Lynn will do your software demo next.
Good morning. Talk about ozone today, not the good ozone. There's up in the higher atmosphere that blocks the UV radiation. The ground level ozone is created by volatile organic compounds, nitrogen oxides, and the heat from the sun to create the ground level ozone, which is three oxygens combined together. The Clean Air Act, which started back in 1970, by the way, it's been around a long time, is regulated through the EPA. The EPA sets standards for the different pollutants that you might find in the air. Those standards change over time, usually getting lower. So if the ozone used to be 85 parts per billion, then 80, then 75, now it's 70 parts per billion. And they're talking about even making it lower in the future, near future, in fact. So it's a regulated pollutant in the air along with others that you see particulate matter, which is passing away of saying dust in the air. And it's regulated by the different sizes, lead, carbon monoxide, nitrogen dioxide, sulfur dioxide, and then ozone. The regulations require every state to develop a state implementation plan to address all of these particles in the air. The Kansas Department of Health and Environment is the one who regulates that for Kansas. They've developed a state implementation plan and it ensures that health and safety are the issues. They look at new sources. So if a business wants to move into Kansas, it might have smokestacks emitting emissions into the air. They need a permit from the state to do so. And the state will determine what filters they have to have in the smokestacks to lower the amount of emissions. New construction or major area sources all have to be permitted by the state. Ozone is seasonal. It's really created during the heat of the summer. And in Kansas, we look at March 1st through October 31st as the ozone season. Not that long ago, it was April 1st through the end of October. So March has been getting hotter recently and they've changed the ozone season to one month longer. So what we need to really worry about are the hot afternoons and the evenings where most of the ozone would be created. And it's created by human sources, automobiles, industry smokestacks, and us. Any aerosol cans we might use, filling of your car with gas, adhesives, perfumes, smoking, all of those can cause emissions to create ozone. So it's the combination of those different chemicals. The pie diagrams on the right show motor vehicles create 56% of the nitrogen oxides and 45% of the volatile organic compounds. So the state really looks at transportation routes when they're looking at where the ozone is being created. Just some examples, point sources of ozone are permitted facilities that they know are having the air emissions through the smokestacks. Power plants often create nitrogen oxides in industries, nitrogen oxides, and volatile organics. Area are emitting less than the regulated amount. So individually, dry cleaners are less than the requirement. But when you combine them, they produce a lot of volatile organics. And as we know with looking at water problems, they produce a lot of water pollution as well. But house painting, refueling, if you're in a state and if you've traveled and visited California, other states that are out of attainment for ozone, you'll know that when you gas your car up, it looks differently, the cone around, the gas nozzle. And when it reaches maximum and clicks, that's it. You can't put any more gas in your car because as you keep putting more gas and fumes are coming out after that click. So they can't do that. So all the gas stations are affected when you go out of attainment. Body painting, solvent use, automobiles, planes, trains, off-road equipment, farm vehicles, bulldozers, all of those create emissions. In Kansas, there are 18 monitoring sites for air emissions, nine of those test for ozone. Three of those monitoring sites are in Sedgwick County, one's at the south border at Peck, one's at the Health Department, and the other's up in the town of Sedgwick. If any of those sites go over the required amount, we can go out of attainment. It doesn't mean all three sites have to go over the amount. And I'll get into that definition of how that works later. Up in the Kansas City area, you have three monitoring sites as well. Kansas City in the past did go out of attainment. They're back in attainment in what's called the maintenance, where they're being watched carefully. So why are we concerned about ozone? It has adverse health effects. It affects your respiratory problems. People who have asthma, bronchitis, it worsens that. It can inflame lung tissue, infect your immune system. So there are a lot of problems with ozone, and that's why it's being monitored carefully and regulated. So attainment means your levels have gone above the standard. Non-attainment, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. Attainment means you're below the standard. Non-attainment means you're above. And maintenance means you've been above and now you're trying to stay below it. So are we in attainment now? Yes. Our area is in attainment. EPA looks at an eight-hour daily average. So they get hourly readings from all of these monitors. An eight-hour average is saying the average of each hour from midnight to 8:00 AM. Then they look at the next eight hours, from 1:00 AM to 9:00 AM, etc., 2:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And they take the highest eight-hour average of that day for that day's standard. At the end of the year, they throw out the three highest days and only count the fourth highest day. So they're giving you some leeway there as far as the, we're not going to deem you for a really bad day or the top three bad days. But if your fourth day is higher, that could affect you negatively. But then they average the last three years. So the year you're in now, they take the two previous year, average all of those together. And so if you have one bad year, it could be offset by two good years. Complicated, isn't it? They didn't make this easy at all. But they did make it so that one bad hour of the day doesn't throw you off because they average eight hours. One bad day of the year doesn't throw you off because they throw out the top three bad days. And then they average three years together. Now, for us, we look at the Metropolitan Statistical Area, which is based on having urban areas with greater than 50,000 population. And they also look at transportation routes because cars are a high emitter of the precursors for ozone. When we go out of attainment, it's not like Wichita goes out of attainment or Sedgwick County. Four counties are affected. All four counties will be considered in non-attainment, not just one city or one county. It affects all four counties. And as I said earlier, it's not just one of the three monitoring sites. I mean, it's not all three. It has to be one can do it for four counties. Have we been over the ozone limit in the past? Sure. This graph shows from 2000 through 2022, the number of days that have been over the ozone limit. So quite a few. Luckily, the ozone limit was higher in the past and it's been going down over time. Like I said, it used to be over 80, then 75, now it's 70. Recently, you notice we've been very low. In our area, many things have been put into place to try to keep the number low. If you remember, if you drove First and Second Street and you hit the railroad tracks and you had to stop and wait and traffic backed up and cars are sitting there idling. Now, First and Second Street go under the railroad tracks. They used to stop there. It's an issue at 21st Street North near Broadway where traffic stops at the railroad tracks. Down on Harry, Lincoln, you have the same problem. The city has tried to reduce idling by putting in issues that may cost money for the railroad tracks, but it saves idling. I know it's not perfect, but they tried to synchronize the lights. So you hit a green light, then another green light, then another green, instead of a red light each time and you're sitting there idling. That's something I know Wichita's been working on. The message boards you see when you drive along Kellogg or 135 or 96 that say accident up ahead, that's so you get off and you don't stay on the highway and sit there idling for an hour or two while they're clearing the accident out of the way. So these are mechanisms put into place to try to keep cars from sitting there idling. In 2022, I made this table to show what the fourth highest reading was in Peck, Health Department, and the town of Sedgwick. The third highest, the second highest, and the highest. Okay, you can see, you know, if the limit's 70, we were over that on four days last year. Some of those days coincided on the different sites, some did not. It might have been one site and not the other two. In 2023, we've already had two days above the limit, June 7th and June 8th. We had 72, 78, 73, 74, 78, 77, pretty high. Now we've got rest of the year. This is early in the year to be that high. Normally, it's in the heat of the summer, not, you know, summer officially starts tomorrow. So we've got an issue ahead of us. We need to try to keep the numbers down, that that fourth highest is low. And it does build in, this table shows the three-year average from 2013 to 15. The upper number is what it was, 75. Now the limit's 70. You can see the three-year average really helps bring those numbers down as long as you have good years prior to what you have. So 2022, even though it was a high number, you've got the previous years to help balance that out. Why is it important? Well, health, as I mentioned earlier, asthma, bronchitis, other issues, economics. If you're in non-attainment, you can lose federal highway and transit funds. You won't get any grants. More stringent expensive control equipment for businesses, industries, gas stations, like those California gas pumps I mentioned earlier, you'd have to change over. Industries would have to put in better filtering systems. Loss of industry and economic development in our counties. I've been asked by the Chamber of Commerce numerous times to come and meet with an industry planning to maybe move to Sedgwick County. First question asked, are you in air attainment or not? Second question is usually about water. But the first one is always, are you in attainment? Because they know it's going to be more expensive for them if you're not in attainment. More expensive summer gasoline, even though you may change the gas pumps, the formula for creating the gasoline used in the summer to lower the amount of ozone emissions costs more per gallon than what we're paying now. So that would be another negative impact on our community. So EPA created an advanced program to say if communities want to show that you're trying to lower the ozone amount, you can sign up for this. Wichita did in 2012 on behalf of the Metropolitan Statistical Area. You still have to be in attainment when you've applied for this. You create a document showing here's what we're planning to do in the future. And it may influence the classification status if you go out of attainment. By that, I mean, it's not just that you're out of attainment. They say, are you moderate out of attainment? Are you severe? Or are you extreme? They have different levels of non-attainment. And they look at that and what's working with the state. So KDHE is approving all of this as well. Ozone alerts are a proactive way of saying, we're looking at the past weather events, the heat that's been happening. We think tomorrow might be a bad ozone day. So the alert goes out saying it's a bad ozone day. I'm signed up for alerts. I also get the KDHE weekly ozone levels from all of our monitors. And I've been getting that for over a decade. But it shows you what's going on and what's happening. So you can plan actions for the next day. The alert can go out the morning of the day, which doesn't help you much. It's better if it's for the next day. But you can say, well, work from home instead of traveling to work and that would keep the travel emissions down. You could say, we're not going to do a certain job today because this would require a lot of off-road equipment. We'll wait till the following day. So you could change work schedules. We're not going to paint outside today. We're going to put that off to another day. So it's kind of just working with the work schedule to make things better, to avoid producing the ozone precursors. Businesses have been asked in the community to create ozone action plans to say how they're going to address that and reducing idling, work scheduling, work from home, reduce traveling, reduce vehicle, you know, carpool together, anything to help. I've handed out also a draft policy for county ozone alert. We don't have one right now. So the question is, do we want to create one? This is just preliminary draft on a unique government. We're very diverse, so one size does not fit all. We can't just say everyone must not idle at all or that you must do something else. But I think each, the plan would address each department, working with, what could they develop to say? What we could, what could we do if an alert came out and tells certain staff to work from home tomorrow? Or postpone a trip or change some of the work till the following day so we're not contributing to the ozone precursors? So this is something to think about on this policy. I took a stab at it. It is to help human health and reduce the precursors. I have a list of definitions there, procedures, and some roles and responsibilities. I have a list of definitions there, procedures, and some roles and responsibilities. And I found out from Legal this morning that human, they're working on some things for human resources and the orientations. So even though I have that in here, it may not apply. But that's why it's a draft. So this is something that if you want to think about it, or give, excuse me, give guidance on, do you want to have me work with Legal and create something that departments would each develop their own policy on how to reduce precursors? And there I have that my department would work with the departments to say, here are the chemicals you're using that won't affect ozone these wells, so try to cut back on these on an ozone alert day. Willing to work with all of you. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Susan, for the briefing and very educational.
Well, I try to live.
Burning questions.
End on a high note.
All right. Commissioners, any comments or questions for Susan? Go ahead.
How do you track this? I know you said you have an alert on your phone. Is there a specific app that you use? Or how do you?
There's an app that you can click on and give your email, and they will send you an email notice saying that there's an alert for that day or the next day. Now, this, you know, I said the two high days were the seventh and eighth. The alert came out the ninth because they realized the past two days have been bad. And it's like, little late, guys. So it's not a perfect system, but it is the one that's out there.
And above 70 is high, is that correct?
70 parts per billion is the high limit right now. If you go over that, your fourth highest day, like 2022, there were four days over that limit. So the number for that date for the year was higher than the limit. But then they averaged it with the two previous years, which brought it down.
What's the average, like, day-to-day, maybe not in the summer, peak summertime, but what do you normally see?
Depending on the time of year, but really the monitoring period, you're going to be in the low 60s to high 50s.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So are we going to go below 70? What's the future? Is there standards coming up?
That's what EPA has been talking about, is lowering it. Last time they talked about that, the petroleum industry fought it, and some other industries fought it. And it still went down to 70 from 75. And so that's going on right now with the battle of, are you going to drop it or not? They've been doing it on a seven to nine-year period, and we're about eight years out from when they did it last. Last time it was in 2015, when they dropped it down to 70.
Okay, well, it affects our funding for key transportation projects in the future.
Yeah.
So that's a concern. Normally, we get a briefing on this at Wampole about every year. Are you or somebody from the city going to be briefing at Wampole here in the near future?
I know Nina has, had been doing that, and she moved to Seattle. And they, I do not think they've replaced her yet. I'm not sure. I know another person, Penny's been sitting in for her. Penny just broke her leg. So, you know, I don't think that position's been filled yet.
Okay, well, Wampole covers a large area in this region, so it's important that they get involved. I see you have the draft policy. Public Works, do we idle our trucks when we go out with those big trucks? And we're looking on putting a new covert in or things like that?
It depends on the location of the work. But if we have to have our flashers on, that's, our flashers only work when the trucks are idling. They pull, they draw too much power and run them off battery. So our trucks have to idle. So if we were in non-attainment days, as Susan was suggesting, as we've had discussions, that would basically shut our operations down for that period of time. If we're doing off-road work, that's a different story.
Okay. But I guess putting barricades up with flashers on them wouldn't be more effective on helping that rather than idling our trucks all day just because of flashers? It seems like kind of a poor excuse for idling our trucks all day.
Definitely. We use barricades where we can. However, when we're working on a project, we're constantly in and out. We have trucks coming in and out. We have, so we have our trucks out there that are idling, that are there to, for safety, for our staff that is out on the road directing traffic. It's an advanced warning for them. But also, we just can't close off, barricade off and put flashers on. We constantly be moving those barricades back and forth to be able to get in and out with materials and equipment.
Okay. And so your efficiency trumps whether or not we get dinged on millions of dollars?
Not at all. We want to work with Fleet to, since a lot of our, not all of it, but a lot of our equipment have moved to LEDs, that's a lot less of a power draw. We've inquired about having it directly connected to the battery. Thus far, it's against our policy. They won't do it. So we're going to work with them. And I know Fleet's not here to speak on this, so I hesitate saying a lot, but we want to work with them on this. I've talked to Susan. But we idle when we have to. If we don't have to, we don't do it. But, you know, the one thing that does trump all of this is, you know, safety for our employees on, out on the open road. And so we're going to use whatever we need to be able to.
I think it's time you think out of the box just a little bit on this. And when you come up to us and you want these multimillion-dollar trucks that we're constantly voting on, you give us the number of hours and the number of miles, and your hours are always way, way high because you're idling your trucks. So I think it's time that you take a look a little bit out of the box for what we can do.
Definitely, we'll do that.
Good comments? Other comments or questions?
I don't think it's just the Public Works. So I think pretty much all of public safety does the same thing. So I don't know if other response vehicles have any options of not idling. I don't know.
I think it's a good idea to have an organizational policy, as Susan has suggested. I think we run it through PRC, which has representatives from the organization throughout. And I mean, we have a lot of policy that are overarching and then dives into each department because we are so diverse organizationally. And each department then sets parameters. But I think it's almost negligent not to do that as a county. I think we have to roll a policy. So let us, let us work on that. We'll work on the overarching policy. We'll meet with departments, see what's realistic, what's not realistic, and craft policy.
I think, again, this policy is intended to be internal to the county only, it looks like. Any thought of doing a PSA for education purposes to the community?
We can do that.
I think a PSA might be, might be valuable also, since this is a four-county region. What about communicating with our partners across the four counties, not just the counties, but the cities?
Yeah, absolutely. There's no sense Sedgwick County doing a policy in a vacuum when we sink or swim as a quad-county reach. And I think we ought to be reaching out to our counterparts and advocating for a universal policy that touches all four counties that are on our group listing here.
I would like to see us reach out to the cities and encourage them to adopt, you can provide model language and encourage them to adopt whatever they think is best, but give them something to think about.
Yeah.
The days that we have non-attainment, those days, can we correlate that with temperature? I mean, can we, I know you say it's hotter days or worse, but remember a former commissioner, he always made the point that the dates we have non-attainment are almost always, we have this heat pattern that just for a few weeks, maybe it's over 100 degrees every day for a few weeks, maybe a month. And those are days where we have a very, very difficult time not going through these thresholds. And so a lot of this can be mitigated by, you know, behavior changes perhaps, but maybe if we could do everything on this list, and maybe still not be attainment if it's 105 degrees outside and humid.
True. Or smoke could be a factor. Comes, you know, something coming in from another area, holding the heat down.
Sure.
So there are different factors. And EPA does allow, if there is some special circumstance that you feel caused you to go out of attainment, you can challenge that and get that whole day dropped out of the equation.
I don't know if the Canadian fires is one of those things right now is still ongoing. I don't know, but.
It might be for the northeast part of the country.
I know we've had in other, other years, we've had wildfires in Oklahoma, for example, that caused problems here.
And actually, we got a couple of days dropped because of that.
I think, I think it's something we have to, I don't like, I don't like the fact that the EPA has been, has been very difficult, but I guess it causes us to at least have a conversation. So if they drop it down to 65, I don't think, I don't think anybody will actually live under 65 very well. I mean.
Right. That's why it's been challenged, yeah.
Yeah. I think 70 is attainable probably, but 65 probably not. Anyway, thanks for the briefing. Any other final comments or questions from?
I might just mention, Vice Chair, I think the commissioners, several of you go to quad counties. Now, this quad county, this group of four counties does not match up with our quad county group, but there are some overlap. I think that could be discussed at next quad county meeting. And then we also have Sedgwick County Association of Cities is probably a good discussion for all the municipalities to, we're creating a list of topics for them to tackle. So this, we will bring that back to them as well.
If we could, they maybe even hand that out before the meeting so we can have a planned discussion on the agenda, that'd be really great.
We just had quad county yesterday.
Timing's bad, so. I'm concerned if, I don't think they'll go in increments of five, but even one or two clicks on this is going to be a significant difference. So I think it's something we ought to be planning for in the future.
Very good. All right. I think going to the next, next topic, we have, I think you left. Go ahead.
A plan for your.
We are here today to talk about a couple of new interactive maps that are available on our website. I'm actually very, I'm just going to say it, I'm just excited about this. This is something I've been trying to do for a long time, and it's taken some upgrades to the GIS system, as well as just technology in general to get there. We're not there yet. We're not done. This is, this is something that's still in development, but it's, it's far enough along that we've deployed it. And so what this basically has, what we've wanted to do is, we've always been able to see where a bridge is at on our GIS map. We've always been able to see, you know, where our roads are at. But we haven't been able to display either internally or externally a lot of the data and the, that goes along with that infrastructure. So, and that's something we've been working on. The first of those maps that we've created is a road closure map. Traditionally, on our maps, we are looking, this is what you find on our website. So the first page of our website, it's a traditional list. You'll find them on many, many, many Public Works websites that just list what your road closures are for the day. And this is fine. This gets us by. We could put links in there when we're closing down, you know, that affects other cities or other cities' projects that are affecting us, like 77th Street, Ford Street up in Valley Center area. So it's been effective, and it gets the information across. But we still get a lot of calls from people who read this and are like, okay, I'm not totally getting it, you know, just based on the description, because we're very limited in what we can do. So now, when you go to our webpage, this option is available. And this is very much a big thanks to GIS, working internally with us to figure out what we needed and what we wanted to show. So now you have the option. You can still go and get that table, that matrix that's on there and look at that, but there's a link right above it that'll take you right here. And it'll actually just show you right off the bat with icons exactly what we have available as far, or what is currently closed and for what conditions. You can see as we look on the screen there or on your handouts. Thank you to Communications for getting those out to you. We can have various reasons for having an incident shown on the map here, whether it be road construction, bridge construction, storm damage, road hazards, flooding, winter weather. Those don't happen very often, but if it does, we have the ability to mark it up there and put it on there. The best thing about this, though, is, as you can see, you'll always see on the right-hand panel which roads in that area are open or closed, or, excuse me, or have a closure incident. And it provides some information. You can click on that panel, or you can click on an icon for more information. When you click to get more information, you're going to find, it gives you, it opens up basically a window, and it'll pop up, give you some contact information and some details about what's going on. When's it going to begin? What's it for? When's it expected to end? Again, this is a tool that's in development. We're hoping, our goal, I shouldn't say we're hoping, but our goal from the beginning and still remains, we want more information here. We want to be able to put on there exactly, you know, traffic, when traffic control changes during a project. During our bigger projects, that changes multiple times. We can have that in there. We could potentially have add data such as project costs, maintenance history on that structure or that road, photos of what's going on, and more. There's various software out there that does this. Right now, we're doing it all internal with our existing software, and new additional costs are involved. So we're very pleased to be able to present this as it is now. But again, that more info tab at the, you see at the bottom, right now, it just basically says we don't have any more information. That's what we want to change. We want that more information to provide additional information for that project or that incident to close that road. One of the things, excuse me, that I am very, this is the part that we've been trying to do for a long time, that's kind of coming to a reality now, is this is what it looks like on the far right-hand side when we're going in and entering in a new project for closure. And there are several boxes we can fill in. A lot of it, based on the location, gets auto-filled, which huge time saver, great, don't have to repeat it. But one of the things you'll notice is, and I think you can see there toward the bottom, is there is a, basically a box for, a dropdown box for the township and the BLCC district. One of the reasons, you know, why would we want to put that in there? I mean, it's not something that changes the incident itself or the project, but what we are hoping to be able to do is, in the near future, do automatic notifications. So if a commissioner wishes, or if a township wishes, they'll be able to sign up for, or just, you know, we will tell us and we'll push out notifications. So whenever someone goes into the system and says, okay, this road is closed today from 9:00 to 3:00 at this location, it'll automatically notify that township, it'll notify Fire, 911, Spider, it'll notify everyone automatically. Right now, that's a hand process. And one of the reasons why we want to go this direction is, especially for those daily closures that are just open and closed after a few hours, you know, if the break at our receptionist is happening at the wrong time, if just something, if someone calls at the wrong time, maybe that notification doesn't get out that day that says that that road reopened back up, you know? Those have happened before, you know? We have to either catch on it, or someone gives us a call and says, hey, this was supposed, your email this morning says this is back open at 3:00. It's almost 5:00. Is that back open? Oh, that email didn't go out. You know, that goes away with this. That's our ultimate goal. We're not there yet, but that's where we want to go with that. And we're, I know that there is, in Poria, Lion County, right now, they are using a system that uses a third-party application that they pay for and allows citizens to actually sign up for these notifications. Now, their system is set up so anywhere in the county, if a road closure occurs, they'll get a notification that something closed wherever in the county, and they can choose to get those or not. They have a huge portion of their population that is actually doing that right now. I want to say they're up to almost 30% of the population has signed up for that. We're hoping to go one step further and just indicate, you know, potentially get it down to zones, like, I want to know whenever something in this township, or this city, or this quarter. township or this city or this quadrant of the county closes, then you're gonna know. Not if it's someplace over in Viola and, you know, you're up in Furley. You, you may not have that interest. So therefore, we're hoping it goes further. But there's, there's obstacles. That's a third-party software. That's costs. We're hoping that, you know, as we develop things with GIS, that can be worked out with, you know, maybe even, you know, we have, we've briefly talked about Office 365 and some of the things that that changes with Communications. So as we move forward, as we talked about email notifications and townships, for townships and Commissioners, there's a possibility. Right now, if, when a closure occurs, it's, they, our, our foreman out in the field call in to our dispatch. Like she goes ahead and puts it in and enters everything and gets it done. We're hoping in the future, when we can get everyone trained and we can get the money together for some tablets, that our guys out in the field will skip that step. They're gonna be in the field on a tablet. The tablet will bring up, open up the app and they're just gonna click on two different locations to indicate the road closure, the reason for the closure. All the data will self-apply itself. They'll enter, you know, a few basic, hit enter, automatic notifications go out to everyone that needs to be notified of it, and they go on with their work. When they're done, they indicate they're done. One of the things we also have is to have it automatically closed. So we say it's gonna be closed by three and it's getting to be about two forty-five. They're starting to clean up and get out of there. They know, I don't have to do anything. The system's automatically three, gonna time itself out and say the road's open. That available, that's, my understanding is that's something that we can automatically do. Right now, we go in and actually close it out and say the road's open. The, we're hoping that with the new CIP software that we started using this year, that there could be some integration with that as far as being able to link when we want more information. Hey, here's the CIP page for that. Here's all the costs, how much we've put into that, what's, re-explains the reason for the project. Those will be for our bigger projects. And right now, you guys, I'll probably have Google Maps or Waze or something like that. You guys are able to look at your screen when you're driving around and see a different color of the highway ahead. That tells you, okay, traffic's a little slower there. We're hoping that, we already have an ability to do that, where if we're, we got a four-lane road, slows down to two lanes for construction, it's still open. We aren't putting a closure on it, but we can change the color of that road and we can indicate that it is, you know, limited, you know, that we do have expected delays because of lane closures. Again, a lot of that stuff is, is what we're still working on. Right now, it's a, it's a, what we're just basically got an interactive road closure map. And we're really excited that it's just more than just a static table that's just sitting on our, our website. This is our website. There's currently two links to get to the interactive road closure. There at the left-hand pane and at the bottom, which is right above that static table, where you can go ahead and get in there and it's front and center on our Public Works page. We will admit, it's not the best use for a mobile device. It works by trying to fit the map and the panes and everything. It just doesn't look really good. Something we'll work on. All the function is there. It just doesn't look the best on a mobile device. Again, we're still working on that. So our next map that we've developed is actually more of a functional map for us, that's basically for us and other municipalities and townships. The public is free to use it. I can see where they may use it from here to here, but in general, I think that this is going to be something that's used mainly by the, our public entities. So basically, as you know, we do every other year inspections as mandated by federal law on our bridges. Well, we have six hundred and seven bridges and we have probably six thousand some culverts. There is no mandate to do anything with culverts. No inspection, nothing's required. We get to them when we can. We do intermittent inspections. I'm, I put it right on the screen for you. Our last countywide culvert inspection was in nineteen eighty-nine. Now, we've done inspections since then. We just haven't done a thorough, from one end of the county to the other inspection since nineteen eighty-nine. This used to be winter work for our inspectors. We just don't have the labor anymore, so we aren't able to do it. So we do it in batches here and there in areas where we can and get them updated. The COVID inventory, this project, this COVID inventory project starts us on the digital path. You know, we've, we've embraced technology everywhere we can. This is one area we have not yet because of costs involved, basically, up until this point. And so we have paper files that have all of our previous inspections from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen eighty-nine, photos, notes, inspection notes, you, you name it. So what we want to do with this project is to be able to digitally, start that digital roadmap going forward. And then what this is also gonna help us do is improve safety, because we're gonna be able, be able, a little more proactive versus reactive with some of these projects and these culverts. So basically, on the left, you're gonna see what our form looks like that we've been using forever. And then on the right is the forms and the twenty-eight different attributes we fill in for a culvert inspection on a tablet right now. So again, some of that information is preloaded in the GIS based on those sheets that are on the left. So when our inspector goes out there to look at everything, a lot of the information just pops up. They just need to go in with dropdown boxes or free text boxes and amend what has changed, whether that be the condition or whether they find a different type of structure in there or whatnot. It also has the ability to store and show photos of the culverts, which is a huge help. So when you get into the map, this is what it looks like. I love seeing this because that garbly gook of mess up there shows you that we've been actively going out and entering a lot of the data for these culverts. You can see down in the southeast part of the county, just haven't got there yet. We're, it's still a project that we are working on. We estimate, we've got about a third of the culverts haven't inspected so far. And that third represents about twelve hundred township culverts and eleven hundred county culverts. So we've still got quite a few more to go, but we've got about half of the culverts uploaded into GIS. So they're just waiting for our guys to get out there, get those inspections done and update them. So they're not waiting for us. We're, they're in there, ready to go, and we're continuing to get that data set in there as well. Just like you can see on the interactive map, you're gonna be able to go to the Public Works front page. There's a link right there that'll take you to it. We don't think, again, this is gonna be a huge public find, but what is really exciting about, well, before I get, this is an example of if you go into the map, you can, you can just free-form zoom anywhere you want to go, or you can just look by township. This is Greeley Township. It's probably one of the ones we, we've done most of the inventory on, up in the far northwest part of the county. As you can see, if you go into that area, you're gonna see that, it'll tell you that we've basically inspected sixty-five percent of the, of the culverts out there. Of those sixty-five percent, thirteen and a half need to be cleaned or replaced, and we still have thirty-five percent that need to be inspected. And that number gets updated live as they do those inspections and enter everything. So you could also see that not only are the township, of the, we differentiate between township and county culverts. And there's a, I believe, there is even an option to even add the bridge size structures. I believe even our bridge size structures are shown in this map. So what we are really excited about with this is kind of like the same thing we have going on with the road closure map. And that is the idea that automatic notifications. So right now, today, it is set up. So as we go out and do these inspections and we enter more information, an email is sent weekly to the appropriate township as well as to the appropriate yard foreman that says, hey, we've done some inspections and we found XYZ that need attention, whether that be culvert markers, smashed inch sections, you know, something, I just, a culvert needs to be cleaned. It brings it to their attention. These are, you would be surprised at how many culverts have just been lost because they're plugged up, been growthed over, and you just don't see any more. Townships don't even knows, realize they have some culverts out there. And this is a way we're bringing those out and notifying them, helping us, helping everybody. And those, those emails just go out. So that's wonderful. It, it just doesn't require anyone to push a button. It doesn't require us to remember to send an email out or take the time. The, the data is just prepared, it's set up, and it goes out. And that was something that, that we worked with GIS and they were able to make happen. So very, very pleased about that. Do we, I was gonna show you guys the culvert map, because I think that's pretty cool, but are there any questions in the meantime?
Commissioners, any, Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Lynn. Very impressive. Congratulations on this and your partnership with GIS to do this. It is very good work. Question on the culvert. The relationship with the county and the townships, are there a consistent specs requirement that overlays all townships when it requires culverts and design or grading and, or all of those things? Or does each township have their own guidelines? Does the county have an overlaying guideline that they have to follow or?
Yeah, the easiest way to explain that is, we recommend to the townships that they utilize our policies and requirements for culverts. In the end, though, they are their own governing entity and they have the right to enact their own policies and procedures. Some have chose to do that. Others have just followed what we recommend. It is kind of a mix of both. We are striving to encourage interaction with the Township Association so that that would be kind of maybe a one-stop-shop place for policies, procedures, everything for all the townships in Central County. That hasn't, they are struggling with, that's volunteer organization. They're struggling with maintaining officers for that, so that has not been well-received. But we always offer and suggest, and then we tell them what we would do in a situation. And again, the township chooses whether they want to do that or if they choose to go in a different direction.
Is that something we should be a little bit more, I, I think you're active in that space. Is there reasons I'm not understanding as to why that's been so challenging? Is it just simply because of cohesion or collaboration? Or it just seems it would be in our best interest, someone who lives in.
You know, that would probably, I think each township would be a different reason for it, but overall, in my opinion, the overarching reason would be that our procedures and policies require a little bit more work, a little bit more expense, a lot, sometimes a lot more expense than what is commonly just available. For example, for a crossroad culvert, we will not put a used culvert in for a crossroad culvert. We're not gonna go in and replace something a couple of years later that we just did. Township on a gravel road is a different situation. They'll put in a, it's a decent used one that was only used for a couple of years. They'll go ahead and do it. Why buy a brand-new one for several thousand dollars when this one will serve the purpose? And for us to, to cut up a, you know, an asphalt road versus them on a gravel road, two completely different animals. So they'll do that. And I understand that. I mean, that's not a problem.
Okay. That's helpful. Thanks.
Commissioner Dennis?
No, thank you, Mr. Follow-up on Commissioner Bailey's question about townships versus the county. What, how do you set the policy, decide when it's gonna be the county's responsibility to put it in and when it's gonna be the township's responsibility? For example, that map you showed of Greeley County, I saw several places where the, the, one that's put in by the county is bookended by ones that are put in by the township. So, do you decide what's, whose responsibility is?
That's actually covered under state statute. So it's the size of the structure itself. If the size of the structure gets to be twenty-five square feet or larger, it's a county structure. If it's under, if it's on a township road and under twenty-five square feet, it is a township structure. And that's what governs that process. So yeah, you'll find several locations where there'll be a township, township, county, township, township. And usually, you're gonna see the county one really where you're gonna have the tributaries and the, and the stream, the major streams are crossing the road. Well, those are obviously larger structures and more pickup, and they're picking up just the drainage off of fields.
Thank you. Any, any other questions, comments?
Okay. I had just a couple. That was one of my questions. I remember, I remember there was a size number, but I couldn't remember what it was. All of these culverts we're talking about today, whether it be county or township, they're all crossroad culverts pretty much. Is that true?
All the ones we're talking about, yes, they're all crossroad culverts.
Okay. And if they, if it requires clean out, we inspect it, are we inspecting township culverts as well, letting them know they need to clean them out?
In this process for the crossroad culverts, yes, we are.
Okay. Do we, do we have, do we re-inspect those at some point to see if that's been done? I mean, that does in fact impact drainage issues that we certainly do have.
At this time, with our current forces, we will notify the township of the need to do something. However, unless we receive a complaint or we notice a flooding situation or otherwise just notice that it's something that hasn't, you know, happened to notice, we might engage with the township again, but it's up to them. They act on the information we provide them.
And you said six thousand, county has six thousand. It's just.
That's, we'll, we'll find out when we're done. We haven't had a count since nineteen, a thorough count since nineteen eighty-nine, and this is gonna get, we've known we've had five to six thousand. We're gonna find out here next year or so.
We're just basically looking for them, so to speak.
In a lot of ways, because we have records that go back, you know, that we might not have updated since nineteen eighty-nine, and that culvert has since been yanked out. And, and by the township, they never notified us or moved it, never notified us. They don't have to. And so we may, our records will all be altered based on that data.
You, you know when you expect to be done with the county-wide inspection on that?
No, we're doing it as we have time, as, as time permits. We have a couple of different people that are going out and doing that. I'm gonna imagine this summer, we're, we're starting to get real busy, so that time is gonna get, we're not gonna get a lot done this summer. Once the winter and fall comes around, we'll get some more time.
Do let us know when that, when that's complete so we can say that we have a accurate.
Oh, yeah. I would definitely be informing you guys when we're done with that. That would be a great moment.
Back to the road closure map. Curiously, is that just only county infrastructure that we're, we are status seen or is it gonna be state and city and?
Actually, for the most part, it's gonna be mostly county. However, if you, I don't know if you noticed on the map I had up there, you can see it on the handouts you have there. The two that are right there in the middle, just on the south side of Wichita, those are both KTA closures, limited lane closures that are on there. So there are times, we also have the Valley Center Ford Street project that's on there, because that affects the county traffic around. I mean, you can say that every closure anywhere affects county traffic, but the bigger ones that we noted that we are sharing information and collaborate with, we'll add on to our, our list. And our, we provide links to their site for their most updated traffic control.
Right. And then, I guess my last question would be on that, would be, yeah, for this to be something we would go to and trust the information, it's gonna have to be pretty accurate. So.
Yes.
As things happen, it's gonna be updated dynamically, and if things are cleared back up again, we won't be, we won't see latent information linger on that site. It should be pretty accurate.
That is, that is our ultimate goal. Like I said, when we do a short-term closure, our maintenance crews go out and do some road patching, and they're gonna close things down because it's a wide patch for the whole road. They'll note in the beginning that they expect to be out of there by three PM. The road will be open by three PM. We'll put that in there. The ability is out there to, as soon as three PM hits, it comes off the list, it's gone. We also have the ability, if they get done early, to be able to go out there, manually close that off and go out there. We're still working on that aspect of it. And, because it, right, like I said, right now, it requires, we had one just last week, in fact. They were out there from nine to three. They did the whole thing. The call came in just at a bad timing into the office, and nothing got changed and sent out to, for the notification that it had reopened. And they caught it the next morning, when it went out and said, oh, this is now closed again. It's like, hey, we never got the notification it was back open. And it, it doesn't happen often, but it does happen, and we're hoping that this process will actually eliminate that.
I'm sorry, I, I guess I have one more question. You did say that this will tie into the navigation apps like on your smartphone, that it will show you.
That is going to be up to those third parties, and, and I would defer to Jack and GIS, whether they, I don't know how it is that they pick up that type of stuff. We will have that type of capability to show that if someone goes in and looks at it, but whether Waze or Google Maps or anyone actually picks up that data and utilizes it, that's gonna be available on our website. I don't know how that gets handled.
Yeah, I tell you, I was riding down the street not too long ago, and there was an obstruction in the road, like a mattress fell off someone's car. And there was a warning on my phone saying obstruction ahead. It was amazing.
That, that's wonderful. That is, that is somebody who drove ahead of you. They indicated on their app that there was a hazard in the road. And I love that feature. We just drove down to Alabama and back, and that came in handy a couple of times with speed traps and. and hazards in the road. So I love that feature.
Dennis likes that a lot, right, David?
Yes, Joe.
All right, it's all questions on that, I think. Any final comments? Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, if you guys want to go website and play with the maps at all, you have any questions, let me know. But like I said, hopefully, we'll see improvements as we go through the year and next year and bring it up. Thank you for your time.
Okay, one more topic. After, when we went through pandemic and lost so many staff, we began to, the organization needed to emphasize recruitment. I think the time is appropriate for Sheena to come in and give the commission an update on recruitment efforts by the county. And I thought you brought some staff. I don't know if you're going to bring them up, but go ahead.
Well, good morning. As Tom mentioned, we are here to give you an update on our recruitment efforts that we are doing here at Sedgwick County. I first want to introduce the team and two of these team members are here with us today. But Amy Murray is our Director of Employment and Training. And along with her today is David Donovan, who is our HR Recruitment Specialist. And he's been in that role since September of 2001. We also have Kami Campbell and Dahlia Ortiz-Saldano and Zoe Sisco as part of that team. As you recall, as part of our ARPA request, we asked for one full-time employee along with some additional funding to help us get our employment numbers up to pre-pandemic levels. And we are rewarded that, and it has paid off for us immensely. We have been focusing our efforts both internally and externally, talking about branding and partnerships, creating a center point for the organization for all of our recruitment efforts. And we also work with other departments, specifically ERP and Communications. And with Communications, we do our social media highlights. And you've probably seen when we go and advertise for jobs. So with that, I would like to bring Amy and David up. And they would like to share some of what we're doing both internally and externally. So Amy, I'll turn it over to you first.
Welcome. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Sheena. Thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate being here today. And so I want to briefly highlight some of the internal efforts that we've made to enhance recruitment and hiring efforts here at Sedgwick County. The first being as Sheena mentioned, we have been making updates to our recruitment branding, which has probably been the most fun project that we've been able to work on. And we have had a lot of help from Strategic Communications. They've been incredibly insightful and helpful during the process. So we are now using the slogan, "Your Future is Here." So this is our overarching slogan. And then we have created three taglines that fall under that slogan. So Sheena is passing out cards so you can see an example, but we have room for everyone. And this relates to diversity here at Sedgwick County. Chart Your Path, which is related to internal movement within the organization. And then Endless Opportunities, which is related to the number of different departments and career paths that Sedgwick County offers. Out of these three taglines, we're hoping that one or more of them will be meaningful to job seekers. And we plan to use photos and videos of employees to demonstrate these taglines and help define what they mean to us. We implemented an onboarding survey last year with the help of our fabulous ERP team. The survey is sent to new employees after 45 days of employment and asked for feedback in a number of areas. Those include applicant and the applicant and interview process, their first day of employment, new employee orientation, and then onboarding within their department. The majority of feedback that we have received so far has been overwhelmingly positive. So we're very happy about that. And of course, we'll continue to keep an eye on that data. Last year, we did utilize ARPA funding to purchase three themes to help with recruitment efforts. That was a company page on Indeed and Glassdoor, a recruiter seat with LinkedIn, and then to post all of our positions on government jobs. So our company page with Indeed and Glassdoor offers us to update content on that page. And every time we do that, then anybody that follows Sedgwick County on those platforms is notified. And so that helps keep our job postings in the forefront on those platforms. The recruiter seat allows us to mine for talent within the LinkedIn system, and that has been very useful for hard-to-fill positions. And David's going to tell you a little bit more about that here in a minute. We added a second employment assistant position to our staffing table in an effort to decrease pre-employment screening timeframes from eight days to four days where we can. I'm happy to report that request for the four-day processing, and we have been successful when we have received those requests. We're also using the second position to have more contact with our candidates through the pre-employment screening process to offer better customer service and keep them more engaged until they walk through the door for their first day. We started a recruitment committee last year that brings representatives from a number of departments across the county together to hear updates about recruitment efforts, collaborate on what they would like us to see for recruitment, and then also plan for upcoming career fairs and events. We recently hired a new training specialist that has revamped our new employee orientation content this year with the goal of making it more interactive and allowing new employees more time to network. We did implement our new interviewing procedures earlier this year in an effort to standardize this process across the county. You all had a chance to review these, so thank you so much for doing that. And then ERP also assisted us with implementing categories on our career site for driving and non-driving positions. This allows us to redirect candidates that may be ruled out solely based on their driving record to other positions. So hopefully, we can keep them here at the county and not lose them to other organizations. And then just very quickly, I want to tell you about some upcoming projects that we're working on that we're very excited about. We are developing a new onboarding program where HR will follow new employees through their first two years of employment with Sedgwick County. We're going to reconfigure our career site with the help of ERP to make it more attractive to job seekers and make it a better platform to highlight some of those photos and videos that I was talking about. We'll also be creating a mock interview program that will be available to internal employees who are interested in growing and promoting within the organization. And lastly, I know Sheena already talked on this a little bit, but I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to recognize the employment and training staff. None of these things would have happened over the past couple of years without their hard work and dedication. We do have Kami Campbell and Dahlia Ortiz-Sosita, employment assistants. Zoe Sisco, our training specialist. And last but not least, David Donovan, our HR Recruitment Specialist, who's also going to talk with you today. We added the recruitment position to our staffing table, actually in 2020, Sheena, you were closed. And we hired David shortly after. He came to us from comm care's recruiter's role and joined HR during the pandemic. He had a number of obstacles to overcome to get our recruitment program up and running and has done an incredible job developing the program into what it is today. I can't wait to see where he takes us in the future. And with that, I'll turn it over to David to fill you in on all his hard work.
Thank you, Amy. Welcome, David.
Hello. As Amy mentioned, my name is David Donovan, HR Recruitment Specialist. And I just want to share a little bit more information about things we've been doing lately, engaging with the community, trying to get the word out about our positions here at Sedgwick County. So in 2022, we attended 40 events, variety of things, career fairs hosted by universities, mock interview sessions with various organizations. Most of those were in-person events, some virtual events as well here and there. So it was 40 events in 2022. Here in June of 2023, we've already done 33 events this year. So we're really looking to surpass last year by quite a bit moving forward. I want to highlight, too, that those are just events that HR has attended. We've also been collaborating with other departments who have been very involved. So they may have attended some of those with me, or they may have had some other events here and there that they were able to make it out to that scheduling, for some reason, didn't work on our end. And that includes Corrections, Comm Care, Health Department, Sheriff's Department, Public Works, EMS, and Fire have all been very active in getting out to events and sharing tables with us, and other departments as well, who I may not have mentioned. Part of our big initiative, we wanted to focus on veterans where we can. I attend the VA Roundtable Meetings every month. That's something that's hosted by the VA where we go out, sit at a table with a number of veterans who are seeking jobs, participating in different programs at the VA. And it's a great opportunity to just have a conversation with them about, what are you looking for? What's your experience? What's your background? Where do you want to go from here? And seeing if we can match them up with opportunities at Sedgwick County that they might like to apply for or at least get more information about. Speaking of the VA, they're going to be hosting a job fair on August 18th. And I've already got five departments committed to having tables at that, Corrections, EMS, Health, Public Works, and HR. We're each going to have individual tables grouped together at that event, so have a pretty good presence, representation from Sedgwick County. I'll mention, if any other departments still want to jump in on that, just reach out to me. And we'll see if we can still get you a table there, too, or we'll share with you whatever we got to do. So also been working on our efforts to focus on diversity, just engaging with different community organizations. I've been doing with the Breakthrough Club, mock interview sessions. They're an organization that hosts programs for individuals who have some kind of barriers to employment in some way. And they're taking classes, working on programs to learn new skills. And part of what I do to go out there is help them out with a practice interview, basically, kind of doing some questions, acting like we're in an interview, but giving them the opportunity to ask, how do I approach this? How do I do this? And giving them advice on that. I'm often find coming out of those, at the end of some of those interviews, I kind of say to them, I think I've got some things you should apply for in the near future here. I meet some great people who are very driven with some goals they want to reach. Participated with Urban League, they hosted a career fair this last January. So looking forward to further events with them. Just last month, attended ICT Open Streets Nomar up in the North Market area. Corrections also came out, shared that with me. Sheriff was out there and the Health Department as well. And this Friday, I'm going to be going out to Envision. They are hosting a career fair for students who have visual impairments. I attended that event last year, so I'll be going again this year to have conversations with them about their career goals and what they'd like to do in the future. Wanted to touch on one thing Amy mentioned, the LinkedIn recruiter seat and how that works. That basically lets us go in for some of those hard-to-fill positions that maybe need some very specialized kind of skills that we don't, we don't see a lot of applicants with that kind of background. We can go and put those into LinkedIn recruiter seat and find resumes that match that terminology, if it's a certain degree, a certain certification, whatever it may be. So our first real test case for that, we used it for the ERP Business Analyst. We were able to identify a number of prospective applicants, get messages out then to say, hey, we have this position we thought you might be interested in looking at. Reach out if you'd like to have a conversation about it. Had one applicant in particular, we had some very extensive conversations with. In the end, did move forward with another applicant, but it gave us that kind of proof of concept of how powerful this is and want to use that more going forward. So I did use a little bit more with some other positions. The Comm Care Personnel Manager was one I shared some potential applicants with. And right now, working with Public Works on their Traffic Engineer position, identified that as another one that might be a little difficult to fill. So looking at some possible leads on that. Another big project just at the end of May here, something I've been wanting to do for a while was school tours, getting high school students out to find out what is Sedgwick County all about, just how much variety we have in terms of career directions they can look at. So USD 259 was hosting an end-of-the-year career fair, which had an experiential learning piece. So we got out there and offered tours to a few of our departments. I want to highlight, too, with the Sheriff's Department, Sergeant Benjamin Romero was a big, big help in helping organize some of the logistics of this transportation, things like that, to help get people out to the sites. But we had Health Department, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, and Zoo who all participated in this. And feedback from the schools is they loved it. They want to do this again in the future. So looking forward to it. I did have additional departments who were interested, but due to scheduling other things, couldn't do it this year, but they want to do it coming up. So we're going to look to expand that quite a bit going forward. Also, want to highlight, one other big partner for us, collaborators, Wichita Workforce Center, they are always such a big help, posting all of our positions up on their site, sharing opportunities. When some of the TV stations are going to be doing some kind of job highlight, job feature, they get an email out to us and say, what do you got that matches this category? And we get it out to them and they help get the word out on that. And they also helped us host a couple of job fairs of our own. We had two exclusive Sedgwick County job fairs, one in the fall of 2022, and then this last spring, 2023, we held another one. And we saw attendance double between those two. So we're hoping to do another one this coming fall and just keep on seeing those numbers grow. And I want to share a little success story from that. I talked to John Humphries over from the Treasurer's Department as we were setting up our last one. And he had mentioned that from those events, people he talked to at the event, who he then saw apply, who then he then interviewed, and who he has then actually hired. So we are seeing success from these events. And again, hoping to continue to build upon that. So that's kind of the information I had to share today, but we will stand for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you so much. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. A couple of questions. A year or two ago, we were short on comm care, EMS, 911, Public Works, courthouse police.
A number of areas, yeah.
So I guess my question is, compared to where we were two years ago, one year ago, and currently, how have we done on starting to fill all those positions that we're so short on? And they're all critical.
Did you have something on that?
We're just looking, we were pulling up numbers this morning. So currently, we have 612 vacancies, 92 positions are posted. So we can possibly look back and see where we were a year ago. But I will tell you, numbers are improving. It's a slow process. Having a dedicated recruiter has most certainly helped. I do want to highlight, having that center person for the organization has been very instrumental. Without David and without this position, we would lose that presence at these career fairs. We don't have the bandwidth without having someone solely dedicated to doing that. So, you know, again, a tribute to what this team is doing. But there's other programs that we're doing, we're doing within the organization that are helping bring people in. This is just one piece of getting those folks in as well.
Good. Yesterday, when I was at Quad County, one of the other counties brought up something that I don't really know what the impact is. But they called it a drop program. And it allows you to keep people that are in KPNF on beyond their retirement and not have a penalty. It sounds like it might apply to capers also, and not have a penalty to keep them beyond their retirement. So I just brought that back to see if you all could look into it and see if it's something that would apply to us or would help us keep people and then people wouldn't have to retire.
KPNF. I would say KPNF has recently implemented a drop program. So any of our members who are KPNF are eligible. It is not a program for capers, though.
Well, they indicated that it may apply to capers, so that's why I brought it. Thank you.
I see Tim Coffey has a comment or a question?
I was just going to provide one data point. So I looked at comm care staffing just prior to the pay increase that we implemented based on your approval. They've filled 92 additional positions in the last 10 months or so. So it's made a huge difference with a lot of help from HR.
We also had House Bill 2195, we testified in favor of this last year, the Long Island Working After Retirement Bill. It didn't leave committee, but I do think it's a topic. We have low workforce in the state of Kansas. I think we have to continue to ask for at least some relief until that fixes itself. But that would be, that would be very helpful. We have qualified people that are willing to work. We just can't hire some of them because of that problem.
Yeah, this is like ozone. This isn't going to get any better. I think as Integra opens and we see some of these other manufacturing jobs come open, we're competing for the same workforce. So the county is going to have to stay sharp on this and evolve. So I appreciate Sheena and her team's efforts to keep us on top on this. But it's going to be the next generation of challenge for the county.
Also, we have a number of recruitment tools in place between the incentive programs and the grow your own. It'd be nice to have an update on how many people have exercised those options and do they stick around very long? Or do they, was it, they got their incentive in the left again? It'd be nice to know kind of how those things are working.
We can get that for you.
That'd be great.
We'll do that. We'll get the incentives analysis. And then also, we'll do a comparative, you have a little bit of time, we'll do a comparative on where we're at today, hiring versus where we were two years ago, and get the numbers out.
Great. Other questions or comments? That was easy. All right, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Both of you. Thank you, Sheena, as well. All right, Mr. Manager Wells?
Twenty minutes, sir. We're right on time. That's all we had.
Very good. I don't have any other comments or questions, but anybody else before we adjourn? Kelly Arnold has something.
Kelly Arnold, County Clerk, just wanted to give an update of my office a little bit. June 1st is our, we kicked off our tax and budget season for our office. We provide assistance and help and numbers to basically every governing body in the county. You know, we provided to you about two weeks ago, the evaluations that we have at this point for Sedgwick County, in addition to every other governing body. But this week and next week, kind of what I just wanted to tell you was, we work with all the kind of what I just wanted to tell you was, we work with all the townships and improvement districts and drainage districts and all these minor governing bodies and assist them with preparing their budgets for the next year. We are meeting with them this week and next week and about the next three weeks here on the sixth floor and starting with, with townships. And so if you'd like a list of when we're meeting with townships in your districts and would like to stop by, these are open meetings and just say hi or, or whatever, we'd be able, happy to provide that to you guys. So.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Look at the whole audience to, at the end of the room here. Anybody else? All right, Mr. Manager, anything else for you? I guess we'll call it a day. Thank you so much, everyone.